We had some technical communication issues. All right, so we'll get started then. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we stand for a moment of silence and the pledge. Pledge allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and due Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you want to have the roll call?
Kevin Ryman?
Here.
Michael Cox?
Here.
Peter Hansel?
Here.
Jamie Girardi?
Here.
Roberta Seig? Chris Williams?
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray?
Here. All right, read the proof of publication.
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 5, 2019, May 10, 2019, and May 13, 2019, or by Ask David of Mail Out and Coating's website.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any minutes to be approved today? I don't think we do, do we? No? Okay. So we'll go through the instructions in a minute, but anybody who intends to give testimony today or speak, if you please stand and raise your right hand, be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give as the truth so help you God?
All right, well, thank you. The Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, Land Development Code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, the final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to the, to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the Board of County Commissioner meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format, procedures are as follows: we have continuances, and that is where there has been a request by the staff or the applicant to have their application continued to a later date. We have consent. Those items are listed on the agenda where we have not had any objections from staff or the public. Those items are put on consent, and we go through those one at a time and approve them en masse. The, as I go through them, if there's something that you want to have heard, pulled, raise your hand, and we'll pull it for discussion. And then we have the regular items, which are not on consent, and those will be discussed as they come up. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentations, and objectors will have three minutes to state their concerns following the presentation. I don't think anybody's requested additional time. Am I incorrect? So...
We have not received a request for additional time.
Okay. Just a reminder to please silence your phones. Before we start, we reserve this time for anybody to come up for public comment on an item that is not on the agenda. So if you are here for something that's not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address. See no one? So we can start.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. I'm going to go through the consent item, the consent agenda first. First item is PC-1, PDD-197371. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Project Arthur, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, Angeline Corp., Bexley JPTR, and Bexley MHTR, and J&amp;M Family Partnership. This is, sorry about that. J&amp;M Family Partnership, Bexley James P. Revocable Trust, and Bexley Mabel H. Revocable Trust, and Len Angeline LLC. I apologize. A rezoning request from AC Agricultural, R4 High Density Residential, R1 MH Single Family Mobile Home, and I-1 Light Industrial Park Districts to an MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, to allow 11,495 residential units, 5,150,000 square feet of commercial retail office, 300,000 square feet of light industrial, and 24,000 square feet of corporate business park on approximately 6,951.1 acres. This comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your pocket. That was distributed to the Planning Commission. In addition, there is an ex parte communication between Chairman Gray and the applicant, and that will be submitted to the Clerk's office as well.
Denise, you said 24,000. I think it's actually 24 million.
24 million, I apologize. 24 million square feet of corporate business park on 6,951.1 acres. I apologize for that.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Yes.
I was just going to make a comment along with that. I didn't do an ex parte, but as part of my job function, I've had several discussions with the applicant on school conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I too had an ex parte communication. I believe it has been filed.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections? Next.
Okay, the following item is PC-2, and for this item, you're, you actually are sitting as a local planning agency because it's a development agreement, so you're wearing the hat as a local planning agency. It's PDD-191014 Watergrass Promenade Business Center Development Agreement. It's an agreement between Pasco County and CKBK Development LLC in connection with the development of the Promenade Business Center, an employment center consisting of approximately 77.08 acres, 53.7 acres of net master roadway drainage wetlands within the Watergrass Project Parcel 1 at the intersection of Curly Road and Overpass Road. This comes here with a recommendation of approval.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Any objections?
The following item is also listed as consent, so if I may go through that one as well. Item P-3?
Yes.
Okay. So item P-3 is, you're also sitting as a local planning agency on that, on that item. It's PDD-19-0982. It's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL-1913, for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, providing for a text amendment to objective future land use 1.1 Principles for Growth Management, and a text amendment to future, to policy future land use 1.4.4 Residential Compatibility Buffer Standards Between Residential and Non-Residential Land Uses, and it comes here with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here? The applicant? The applicant here? Anyone here to object? No objections, okay.
And on item, I should mention that on item PC-2 and PC-3, as you're sitting as a local planning agency, on those items, what we're wanting you to find is for you to find it consistent with a comprehensive plan and to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And that is the end of your consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and specifically PC-2 and 3, consistent with the comprehensive plan.
As noted.
Okay. So any, you have a second, right? Okay. For a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Under discussion. I just want to say, even though PC-1 is on consent, there was a lot of work that went into PC-1, so I don't want you to think because it was a five-minute presentation that there were, there's a lot of people in the audience, spent a lot of time, probably the last six months, they met once a week or twice a week to get that to you today, so there's a lot of work that went into it.
I had the, several of us, I think, had the benefit of meeting with the representative for the applicant, and this book that we went through was quite voluminous, so I'm definitely aware of that, and it was a great job, I thought, when I reviewed it, so looking forward to that. Thank you, Clerk. Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alexandra Laporte with Planning and Development. You will be acting as a local planning agency for this portion. It is PDD-190944, the Temporary Moratorium Ordinance, an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioner establishing a temporary 180-day moratorium on the submission and acceptance of applications not previously submitted through the pre-application process prior to the May 7, 2019 Pasco County Commission Agenda Online posting of the introduction of this proposed ordinance for plan development, comprehensive plan amendments, rezonings, preliminary site plans, and preliminary development plans, where the use of land for new mini warehouse and self-storage facilities is specifically identified in the application. The background is that there is a need to research and develop standards within the LDC pursuant to comprehensive policies that support design standards to preserve and enhance the visual and functional characteristics of certain locations along major commercial corridors. There's also a need for Planning and Development Department to research best practices for the development of mini warehouse and self-storage facilities within Pasco County, and there is a need for Planning and Development Department to analyze whether or not additional standards relating to these uses should be incorporated into the LDC. There have been similar ordinances adopted by Tamarack, Florida, Miami, Florida, and Collier, Florida, in the past couple of years for the same purposes, as well as other municipalities around the country. So this imposes a temporary prohibition on the submission. It exempts special exceptions, MPUDs, and plan development, comprehensive plan amendments approved prior to the effective date of this moratorium whose sole purpose was for the development of such use. And we would have designed standards in the ordinance forthcoming at the end of the six-month moratorium. So the recommendation is to find the proposed ordinance consistent with the Pasco County comprehensive plan, and we recommend approval of the ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners. The first reading being June 4, 2019, in Dade City at 1:30 PM, and for the BCC adoption, second reading, June 19, 2019, 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
All right. Any questions from up here?
I have several questions on this one. I guess first, just a little background for me. I mean, I know it says it's Commission, you know, Commission wanted this or asked for this, but I mean, what's the purpose of this?
The purpose is to...
Is it to do away with self-storage?
No, it's not to do away with self-storage uses, it's to better understand their impact on our corridors, so both from a visual aspect, but also in order to maintain economic viability on those corridors for higher generating employment businesses. And so depending on your location in various corridors across the county, standards would reflect that, whether it would be pushed back from any given corridor or limit, you know, the distances between such uses. We're still in the phase of researching what other municipalities have done across the country to better understand what would be applicable in Pasco.
Another way to do that would be to limit it in certain corridors where you're concerned with it. I mean, this just puts a blanket moratorium on 100% of self-storage in Pasco County.
Just for the submission while we're researching and developing the design standards to go along.
Well, I, I mean, I hear that, and I understand what you're saying, but I know this is only 180 days, but, I mean, what's to say it can't be extended down the road? I mean, is this like a blanket, 180 days is it?
The Board, could you, oh, David, if you want to...
Well, there's legal, there are legal requirements. I mean, I don't think it could go longer than a year without causing some legal issues, so, but the county attorney did ask staff at the board meeting whether they could complete this within the six-month timeframe, and the representation was that staff could complete it within the six-month timeframe. So based on that representation, we have no reason to believe this is going to go beyond six months.
Yeah, I just, I mean, A, there's, there's a need for it, or else developers wouldn't be doing it. I mean, I hear and I read in the agenda that there's been 13 applications in the month of February, et cetera. I mean, developers wouldn't be doing it if they, if there wasn't a need for it and if they weren't able to lease the space.
And we recognize the need, and that's why the moratorium isn't to ban such use. It's just to recognize there's a need, and how can we best facilitate accommodating that need while maintaining certain corridors for their best and optimal use, because they do consume a lot of land, and they have 85% of self-storage uses employed less than five employees. So we're trying to have, you know, do the research, do the best practice to understand the impact.
So the rub is that they're taking up places that should be designated for employment? That's the concern that has surfaced?
Yes. And depending on how they're placed on a site, there's an opportunity to allow for such use to still come to the site, allowing for the frontage to be developed with liner buildings that would be consistent with developing higher employing generating businesses. Portland is a case that they have really well-defined development standards where building location comes into play, not only how the building looks, but also where they're sighted within a property.
I have a question, though, that was brought up by my colleagues over here. When I drive from the Wesley Chapel area, either to Dade City or in this area here, I just see hundreds, if not thousands, of apartments being built, and there are homes that are, say, in the, probably the 1,200-square-foot living space. Is, in my opinion, I see the timing of this is kind of detrimental to the construction of all these apartments. These folks are going to move into these apartments, if they have excess property that they wish to store, isn't this going to be a negative impact on those folks that are moving to apartments?
If they're already moving, then the self-storage facilities are already here that can accommodate them. This is just a six-month, you know, application.
That's assuming that they have the space currently in place, but if you're not going to allow new ones to be constructed, it's kind of like having kind of an airplane trying to land on an aircraft carrier, but no aircraft carrier.
The ones that are, I understand, Commissioner, the ones that are already in the pipeline, they already will be built, right? This is just for new submission and applications for such use. So we have a very large one near Bexley and the corner of North Point and 54 that has been approved. It's currently already under construction. It's about 96,000 square feet of storage, just that one site. So there is, there are many that are already in the pipeline. The 13 in February, there's been more in the pipeline since then that will have had their site plan and construction plan approval and will begin construction, so...
How many units then of these 13 that you just spoke of? How many units will they have available for people to store? The ones that I've...
Whatever they're...
Not that large to begin with, so...
I, I can't speak to how many units...
It's kind of a projection that you don't under, maybe I'm not explaining it very well.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
I think some very valid points have been brought up here. I think, I think maybe we're just, it's overkill.
I'm sorry.
I think maybe it's just overkill. You're banning the construction of units anywhere in the county when really all you want to do is ban them on the primary roads.
We're not banning any, we're not banning the construction of those that are...
You're not banning anything yet, because what you're doing is making a proposal, and we're here to make a judgment of whether that proposal was reasonable. And personally, I don't think it is reasonable. I think what you need to do is take it back and start looking at what roads you want to protect and, and limit construction on those roads, not the entire county. We've got people out here, this is their real world. We've got people out here with money invested, time invested, you know, and opportunities that, we don't know if they're going to be there tomorrow, so, you know, I don't think that's fair to hold somebody up for six months when you don't really know why you're doing it. So don't, don't answer me yet, because I'm not done. And I believe, Jamie, you're right on, you're right on target, that there's, you know, you can't ban everything just because you want to control a smaller portion. You know, I think you need to be more targeted about what you want to limit, and I wouldn't have any problem with that. I understand, and I even agree that we should limit those types of units on major roadways for, for a number of reasons. And some of it's just visual, but the other things are employment. I agree with that. But I don't think you should ban something that's back off of a road somewhere that somebody can have access to if they have the property and it's in the proper zone. And that, so that's my feeling about it.
Can I answer the question of location? Our C-2 zones that, and C-1 zones are all along the corridors. So very few exceptions, and I don't have the map, I wasn't prepared to talk to this map, but there's very limited roadways that carry C-2 and C-1s, as well as industrial, that are in the back, you know, backroads away from these major corridors.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Derek?
And just to underscore what Alexandra said, if you look at the zoning map, most of the, of the zoning districts that would allow the mini storage, such as the C-1 and the C-2s, and very many of the MPUDs that would also take into account the C-2s and the C-1 uses, are located along the targeted corridors that you're referring to. And so we believe that the moratorium will help us better guide the development along those corridors while we work, and the point of the moratorium, of course, is to establish walkability, is to establish the economic development character along these corridors, without which we'll have a lot of land use, a lot of land used up by mini warehouse storages that don't have high employment or high commercial activity taking place there. And so the moratorium is necessary to spend some time working on regulations that can help, that can improve the corridors that we're targeting, such as 54 and 56, 52, US-19, I believe, off the top of my head, US-41. We've looked at those areas, and here's the map that we were talking about in a second. Alexandra can refer to it. But we believe by producing, by enabling this moratorium, we'll be able to more adequately address the land use before it all fills in.
What about those poor people that have people, have property that's not on a major corridor, such as, take Denton Avenue or New York Avenue in Hudson, there's a number of properties there that are zoned adequately for, for that type of use. Why should they sit there for six months and not be able to do anything while we're trying to dream up a way to control these other properties?
Well, there's an important distinction being made in the proposed ordinance, which is that there are exemptions available to entitlements that exist solely for mini warehouse storage. So if you had a special exemption for mini warehouse, you wouldn't be stopped by the ordinance, by the moratorium to go build it. For those other properties that don't, that don't, where the exemption doesn't apply to them, there are other land uses available according to the entitlements of their zoning district that they could freely develop into those during the moratorium. So it's not, it's not as if you're completely destroying the value of the properties that have the C-1 or the C-2 zoning status. There's a whole list of other land uses that they can also do under that zoning designation.
If you destroy it for one person, is that fair? You know, I mean, you're...
It wouldn't get destroyed.
It would. If I had 10 acres, for example, on New York Avenue, and, and I could normally put something like that on there, and now I can't. I can't, not only can't, I can't even apply. Wouldn't that affect me?
Well, you have other uses available to you, other entitlements.
But that's not what I want to do. I want to, I want to build, I'm just using that as an example. If I wanted to do storage, then why couldn't I apply? You know, that wouldn't, that wouldn't mean you couldn't develop standards, but I just, I just think you're, it's overkill. That's my personal opinion.
What I've heard today is the question's on location and it's on spread, the floor area ratio, for example. I mean, if you limit those, I mean, if you limit the zoning that you're allowed to build, if you limit the areas where you're allowed to build the self-storage and you make them build up, I mean, because there's a lot of, a lot of people are doing these things now that are three and four stories tall, climate-controlled storage. They're nice-looking places. I don't understand what the problem is. I mean, the single story that uses five acres for 20,000 square feet, yeah, I understand that's an issue. I just, I just personally have a problem with it. And I, one other thing I don't know, and I, I've heard interpretations before that RV and boat storage is classified into self-storage and mini warehouse-type space. Is that true? Is that a mor, is there a moratorium on that, too, under this, this moratorium?
This ordinance, as currently proposed, does not have that language. It was, there, there is a component to self-storage that some of those RV boats combined with the mini self-storage, but it's not specifically called out the RV.
So if somebody comes tomorrow, calls tomorrow and wants to set up a pre-application meeting for a boat and RV storage place, are they going to be allowed to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You know, I think of a couple ones that have recently, in, on this side of county, that have recently CO'd. The one that D built on to Cubulus, you know, I mean, I think that that, that one is perfectly located because it's sitting next to Newport Ritchie's stinky water plant and what else are you going to put there, right? Versus the one that's out on Trinity Boulevard that, it's a good-looking facility, you know, there's no question that, that it is. Is maybe that the, is that the best place for it? Maybe not, but, you know, I realize that certainly in an employment center where you really want to have employment and push and incentivize employment centers to go on an employment center, not a storage facility or something of that nature, I hear what you're saying. But on the same token, these facilities pay good property taxes, and they're not a drain on services. You know, I mean, you're not going to have a lot of calls for police and fire and that, that type of thing. So I don't see that they're that bad of, bad of a project to have where the market says they need to be. You know, at the end of the day, the market is going to determine what needs to be where. And if it goes through the proper approvals and gets the approvals, then I think it ought to be allowed to be built. You know? The fact that you have so many applications in, in right now just tells me there is a need for it. Also says that Americans have too much junk, but, you know, that's what we have.
I'm one of them, probably.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just to, you know, speak to the idea of services, I think you're right that as a land use specifically, it doesn't, these types of land uses don't require many services in terms of fire and police and what have you. However, they do contribute to the sprawl nature, particularly along these corridors, because I think, what is the average size, Alexandra, of a warehouse site?
6,000 square feet, and they consume five acres of land.
Typically, five acres of land times the 20 or so we have right now, and you can understand the, the amount of land that's being taken up on the corridors currently. So as the map indicates, it's, it's a question of how can we better address the land use on these corridors? And again, it's not a, it's not an outright ban, it's only a moratorium that creates a pause in what can be submitted. What's already in the pipeline is already moving through, the process, moving through the process and will be built.
Mike? So my concern is if we, the board ultimately gives you a moratorium there, then you have a six-month window. And not to be critical, but six months can turn into eight months, could turn into maybe a year. And as opposed to if you don't have a moratorium, and maybe it's such a big issue to you, then you rather, sooner rather than later, bring... you rather, sooner rather than later, bring something back and say, this is what we'd like to do to regulate that and do it that way. I'd rather see, if it's such a big deal, then get the job done, as opposed to saying, we're not gonna allow anything which gives us six months, which will turn into eight months or more.
The six-month window is probably one of the fastest windows we can turn around in ordinance because of the stakeholder groups that we need to attend and go to, so we're confident that we can do that. We have a draft ordinance already prepared. It's a matter of calibrating it and then speaking to various stakeholders about it.
And we're trying to make sure we're as consistent to the comprehensive plan and what it lays out for these corridors as possible, so.
Well, I, I just don't think it'd take very much effort to identify the corridors you're concerned about, incorporate them in the, in what you're trying to do, and then it wouldn't penalize somebody that's not on one of those corridors. That's my objection.
Can I ask one other question? Have you done a study on the capacity of the current storage facilities, whether or not they're at eighty percent, a hundred percent of capacity? But you've done a study on how much space they take up on acreage to build one, correct? In other words, I'm asking for if you have done a study on whether or not these facilities are at capacity or not?
No, I have not.
Okay. Let me go back to the apartments. Have you ever considered doing a moratorium on apartment constructions to slow things down? After all, employment is one of the issues I heard. You said that these facilities only employ five people. I don't know about apartment, apartment complexes, once they're constructed, how many people do they employ? A couple, a few.
Well, the question of apartments is a separate issue because it's a density issue.
You're cherry picking one industry over another, and they both have the same capacity in that they require goods and people to store some facilities, whether it's an apartment or whether it's in a storage room. That's what I look at, and see that you're just cherry picking one industry, and, you know, I have a problem with that, let's be honest with you.
Well, it, it's really two separate matters, because one deals with density issues and the other deals with intensity issues. So self-storage facility along fifty-four is a very low-intensity use, and it takes up frontage along fifty-four that could otherwise be used for office or industrial or commercial activity, which are more intense uses that are more economically profitable to the, to the long, long-term economic outlook of the county.
Terry, why don't, why can't you just identify the corridors you're concerned about? What's the big deal?
Sure. And I have a, so they're, they're outlined here as per our comprehensive plan, the corridors that have been identified, and there's three additional ones that we would also look at having the standards applied to specifically. So the, the ones highlighted in, in the dark yellow are the three that are not yet spoken to specifically in the comprehensive plan amendment. The other ones are-
You know, so US nineteen is one of them.
Correct, for redevelopment.
And the, the service merchandise sat vacant there for twenty-five years. And I don't think I'm exaggerating how long it sat vacant until a storage facility came in and went in there and made it a viable piece of property again.
That looks good.
It does.
Any other comments from up here?
Do you wanna add? Did you wanna comment on that, or?
No, I don't, I don't-
Any other comments?
Anything about that site specifically.
Is there any public comment? From, from the floor? Anybody like to speak? Okay. Barbara, nothing? All right. So any further discussion up here? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to deny.
You have a motion to deny?
So to be clear, your role on this, for this ordinance is determine whether it's inconsistent or consistent with the comprehensive plan, so I don't know that you really have authority to make a recommendation to deny. You can't make a recommendation that could be found inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but I don't think you have authority to just say deny.
You always take the fun out of everything I'm trying to do.
But you do have authority to say, to recommend that you cannot move forward because you believe it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
So I'll move that we find it inconsistent with the comprehensive.
Okay. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
You have a second? Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.